It was a Native American meerkat.
On this one. If you look here. Look here. I've heard this one.
Hello Danny.
How are you?
Hello Jacob. Hello sir.
I don't have.
That's it. Yeah, that's easy.
Yeah, I don't have.
Where is it? Where is Brandon?
I know. They do those for us. And last year they messed it up too. Put old miners down or something.
Who printed them?
The carnival people who come in, they print them and bring them to us.
Well, I'm not surprised. This year's a mighty thing. Me and Brandon.
I saw you doing it. I knew that. Well, last year. Old mining area.
I have two storage units of my baggage. One that I use plus three storage units.
Contact this with people.
Yeah, carnival supplied them.
Danny, how you doing sir?
I'm doing fine.
Didn't have to pay for them.
Or something, or are they out here for a reason?
This Joyce. This is the authority ordinance that we passed.
I think they just dropped them off so we can hand them out or hang them up around town or something.
We hadn't talked to them, people who are being evicted. They don't want them to go.
Nobody's being evicted though.
Because they're being evicted because since we there.
Tim Murphy.
Here.
Joyce Mina.
Here.
Charles Campbell.
Here.
Will Bear.
Here.
Karen Hawkins.
Here.
If we could on this, this special work session meeting, we're just gonna talk about this in this alone. If you have any questions. We'll kind of wrap up, we'll have a few minutes and try to clarify on anything we can. The question at hand is over the smaller square footage house. There are two ordinances on the book. As we speak, the manufactured home parks and the bill 770 which is trailer house. Trailer house ordinance on placement. I don't know what all of you thought, kept around, you've had copies of both these ordinances. But I think between the two of them, one can be put together. There's enough force in both to make one ordinance. As we go through this, I think the manufactured home parks ordinance needs some cleaning up. And some issues that I don't really understand probably sit there. Just for talking points. Go to, it would be page three of the manufactured home parks. Be section four, one, zero, point zero eight one. I think it would be somewhat ill-advised. Sorry, sir. To distinguish this as a tiny house deal. Without, I doubt they've been around long enough to be defined by Westerns, but the way most city ordinances define tiny homes is that they come in on wheels, they have hook-up soft stuff, it's basically like a travel trailer where you hook up. When you're done, you unhook and move on. So I think we should probably define square footage and where they need to be or belong. The manufactured home ordinance defines a lot of that, and I'm not sure that maybe in this case we shouldn't allot certain areas where they are permitted, whether they pre-maned or stick-built on premises. Clears up a lot right there. And questions with them being in the middle of town and all that stuff, that solves a lot of those issues. If you look through this basic ordinance. Page two, manufactured home park, it lays out what they designated an area of four acres or more. As we go through location, manufacturing, and generally then home park license. As you move on, standard design, construction, and maintenance. Conditions, grounds, building structures, it lays out basically everything. Side area law requirements. Areas, recreation areas, has to be so big for square footage for how many homes are in. If we do something like this and there is a actual area of one, it's my understanding, walk around there and talk to people, that most cities, this is what they're doing. You've done some research on this.
I'm not sure what you're looking at, but.
Well, we're looking at manufactured home park deal.
My understanding is right, Mayor.
You mean get a sample ordinance later?
No, it's the one that's currently on the books.
Okay.
What you're saying is you believe that we should adopt a tiny house policy that's similar to the manufactured home policy? And not let them stand on their own lot by lot or whatever the case may be.
Probably the best way to clarify all this would be put a square footage requirement on minimum. If they were below that, then they would go in that area.
I see what you're saying.
If they were above that, I mean, there's been several numbers thrown out. I mean, in this deal, it makes, it accommodates a single lot, which is one place you can tow one. Is it this part? And it's 320 square feet. So, I guess a good place to start on this would set a standard. I mean, there's been several numbers talked about, 450, 550, 750,000, but whatever. Anything under a certain square footage would.
Would have a little of an area.
Yes.
Above that, we would stand on its own.
Yes. And it would need to be, this ordinance, this manufactured home ordinance covers a lot of ground here on this. Whereas the way the utilities have to be laid out, the way the streets runoff, drainage, sanitation, all that stuff is pretty much covered here. And then there's clauses going forward when things become dilapidated, whatever. This ordinance, in my opinion, needs some cleaning up on either end. Where there was some, I mean, in my opinion, an ordinance is an ordinance, and I don't think that as per Mayor, City Clerk or anything here in 410 dot point one one zero general use regulations, section D. Shall be unlawful camp overnight in Wychu Park occupied trailer or vacation trailer overnight on Union Public Street, Cleveland Street right away unless permission is granted by Mayor slash City Clerk. This provision shall not apply in cases where manufactured home trailers park for the purpose of making emergency repairs. Well, emergency repair, usually when I'm making emergency repairs, it's fairly quick and you don't follow this progress with a calendar. So, I can't see that, but an ordinance is an ordinance, and I really don't feel as though the Mayor or the City Clerk should have the ability or the authority to step in and say, okay, this is important. An ordinance is, get back to work. Orders at the end.
There are, there are, there's always been probably smaller homes than others. Square footage is something made for if it was basically a homeowner, whatever they decided they needed for the time. I was driving around in Granby and I noticed there was several that are relatively small, and smaller than some bigger. Sitting on lots, didn't look too bad, but I think there is a probably too, a too small for what I would consider general use to stand on their own type thing, like 300 square feet or whatever. It is a bit small, but as you extend that, if you put porches on and stuff like that, then they, they look or give the appearance of something much larger even if they're 450, 500 square feet. So, there's gonna be a number here that this council probably have to come up with that would determine you're able to stand on your own on a lot or whatever in town. Don't go few things, that way, I'm seeing, am I seeing that wrong? That's right, I look at it, I'm driving around town, there is a lot of smaller homes. I'll take Sis' channels. Hers is 775 feet. That's a nice two-bedroom house that I wouldn't mind me and my wife moving into. I mean, it's big enough for us. I'm saying the shed, what I call tiny houses is more, or should go under the manufactured. And towns communicate their small dwellings differently. Some will start out as a, as a tiny house, you can barely have 300 square feet. And one may be a bigger, which would be considered a small house, more square feet. One is a, 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 just a, a little larger than that on up to a large small house, if that makes any sense. But it's different square footage just all the way up. And I don't, I don't know what, you know, Granby back in the early days, a normal-sized house was smaller than they are now.
Sure they were.
And I'm just, as just driving around town, I can see that. Now, the lots in, in town, say in the, in the residential area, would accommodate a smaller house even though it's, it's not a, what you consider a tiny house. But if you wanted to build a bigger house worth a little bit more money, you're probably gonna have to step out into a different part of town or, I noticed some houses that were built behind the pawn shop. They were built pretty good size, and whoever did that, was it one builder or a couple of builders that built four homes in there?
Yeah, well, I don't wanna, but I don't wanna get too far off the road here. The biggest problem with, if you ever step and look through old ordinances for Granby, is trying to pick on them day-to-day now. And then you find yourself here looking at them.
Well, exactly.
And, you know, you guys have all at one time or another discussed or mentioned or whatever, John, and National Building Code. Well, if that endeavor is ever to be taken on, then, you know, with going into it knowing, everything that's here, whatever grandfather said, period. There's no if, ands, if, buts about it. But, you have to look at the National Building Code having standard setbacks, standard procedures on how close they are, how much is under road, how much is this, how it's a porch, you know, and that's a, that's a tall order. There's been a lot of discussion about that, the way the zoning or building planning or anything set up. It's, it's a, quite an undertaking. And I don't know if everyone is entirely aware of the step that it takes to move in that direction. That being said, in this aspect, you can't look at, well, how big a lot is, how big of whatever it is. You need to agree on a, and, you know, if you want to split hairs, when the assessor comes to look at your stuff, if your porch is not, or deck or whatever it is, attached to your house, it's not considered part of your house. You're not attached to them.
Yes, you are. Yes, you are, on porch, you're, you're attached on porch.
It's not attached.
It's not attached.
It's not attached.
It's not, that's why people do these buildings.
Yes, they do. I've been taxed on my porches on the trailer up there and I didn't even own them.
You need to go check on it and have them come back out and reevaluate.
Yeah, because if it stands.
They do tax you.
If it stands alone and it is not attached to the structure, it's not considered square footage of living. So they got you.
They, they taxed the trailer, they taxed the trailer, but they taxed me just for the porch.
Well, you need to go have that checked.
No, well, they, we checked the check card.
Was it at a different rate?
Uh?
Was it at a different?
Yeah, it's a different rate, but they do tax you for porch.
And here's, here's something else though, where they'll get you to, is the porch, poles sat in the ground?
No, they're sitting on the ground, but they're not in the ground.
If they're not on the ground, if they're not attached to the ground, they get the.
They sure taxed, taxed me a lot.
But, all this being said, you know, there's, there's a lot of ins and outs on this. So, I think basically before this goes a whole hell of a lot further, there needs to be a square footage set. And back to what I said earlier, so I'll get my point across. By standardized vocabulary, tiny house is a manufactured home. Okay. So, if it's stiff-built, there's many slip, when you talk to the whip. Stiff-built is kind of pretty manufactured home, it's built on something. So, what's that, there needs to be some thought through this, and I'm not trying to discourage or encourage anyone's progress with anything, but I'm just saying, there's an individual appeared before us, want to put a trailer house in, the here didn't apply. He came to me and said, I'm gonna build a house out there, and his answer to a house was a storage building from Southern. That he put out there and no sewer, no, no anything. And with everything, the door left standing open like it was, your only recourse to this is there's no sewer hooked up. Because there's no way to cover anything else. And I mean, I had to drop my pants and put the bulls on, but it's fact. There wasn't anything else you did wrong, there's no, was nothing like that. So, this, like I said, I'm not wanting to prolong this, but I'm also not wanting to look like an attitude benefactor there. And at the end of all this, Martin, so, we need to, this needs to have a lot of thought and cover every angle so we know what, where, why, and when, and what the neighborhood to say they have in it, what the, you know. Because with one misstep, you can affect property value and leverage. And that's what we're here to assure that people can use their property however they feel necessary. But if we protect the town as a whole.
Are you gonna have an ordinance by the end of tonight?
No.
Okay. So, why are you putting me off if this is just a discussion?
Because it's just a discussion, and we will answer questions at the end of, period.
After you've done whatever you're gonna do.
Martin, is there a language I can speak now that you would understand?
No, no, I, I know. You, you do what.
If not, be still, period, the end.
4815. You didn't do it to Danny. You didn't do it to Danny.
Now, I didn't do it to you the first two times, but three is I'll be struck out.
No, this is the first time.
This is a work session by God, and that's all it is. So, sit there and be still at the end of it, I will offer up any questions. Until then, try to mind your manners if you think it's all humanly possible. I do not want to discard you out of this meeting.
Oh, you always do that though. You do what, you do, you know, what I'm probably gonna complain about is that you went ahead and let her put in a trailer.
Let me know.
Didn't nobody allow him?
As I said, when we come in here, we're discussing this and nothing else. And at the end, if you've got any questions, you can ask them. I'm not saying anybody's gonna answer.
Oh, I'm sure you won't.
The end. I'm not doing this for your webpage.
No, you're doing this for your own usage. You'll have to answer someday.
It won't be tonight.
Probably not.
Jacob?
What? He, he goes ahead and says it, he goes ahead and solves me, and then he goes ahead and says he gets to do whatever.
I was elected here, I have that right. See ya.
All right, if you move this camera, I'll be pressing criminal charge. Let the cameras remain then, if I'm gonna be removed.
All right, I'm under arrest for refusing to let me leave.
I'm not refusing to leave, I said just, I refuse to let my camera leave. This is, this is a criminal offense.
Danny, could you, I want to sort of figure.
The panel will be secured in evidence and you can recover it tomorrow. Recover it after court.
Okay, back to what we was talking about.
Where were we?
So, that being said. Jared, do you have a legal opinion or any advice or anything on any of this?
Yeah, yes. Well, first thanks for having me. I, I mean, I'm here basically, if you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you guys have to the best of my ability. I don't, you all know me, I'm gonna be pretty upfront, I don't know, I'm gonna say I don't know. And I may have to look it up just like the citizens expect you all to look stuff up. I, I have brought just an example, like here's an international building code. That's just a building code, of course, they have international electric codes, international plumbing codes, here's the international fire code. So, they're pretty, they're pretty extensive. But, if they're adopted and there's not huge changes made to it, then the laws are pretty much set in stone, so to speak. I mean, these are things that have gone through other cities, they've been accepted by courts, they're not, they're not outrageous. I mean, they're, they're just minimum building codes. And I bring that up, one, because you guys were kind of batting around the idea of maybe adopting some building codes. There, there is state requirements that all municipalities review their current building codes. Yeah, that puts us in an odd situation because we don't have building codes. So, if we're required to review them, how are we supposed to review? I mean, that's a minimum requirement, so how are we supposed to review them if we don't have them? I think it somewhat goes without saying, there's, there's probably a requirement that we're gonna have to have at some point. I mean, there, there have been some, it seems like the state's taken some power away from municipalities, but in the same sense, I mean, these are minimum restrictions that affect, like you mentioned earlier, other property owners that are next, next door. So, if you, you know, if you have a flood or something in this, on this piece of property because it doesn't meet a minimum standard and that affects the other property around it, then that's, that's a big deal. And, and I know that probably happens with drainage, with plumbing, with electricity, with fires or whatever. I mean, it goes back to, you know, the beginning of, the end of time probably, that, that your property if it affects someone else's, then that's a liability, and then if there's, the city isn't having minimum restrictions, and that could potentially be a liability for the city because they're not requiring anyone to do anything special. So, but, I want you to know what you're also getting into, even though it's probably required. There, there would have to be a board of adjustments that is called, basically it's, that's where appeals would be, would be heard. There's a zoning commission that would, would probably need to be adopted, which would be a separate, separate from that board.
There are requirements on that too, aren't there, as far as who sits on?
Yes, yeah. I, I brought an old, other, another city's codebook on just the, just for the purpose of like the zoning and stuff. I mean, it's probably twenty, thirty pages long or so, I would guess, of just what the requirements, you know, are for the zoning commission. But, I mean, when I was talking to a little earlier, I mean, there, it, it seems like it's really basic, but it, it could be as basic as taking some crayons and, and going through your map and, and categorizing what zoning, what part of the city meets certain zoning criteria, and then, and of course, there can be applications that are made to the commission if they wanna change the zoning from residential to the business or, or whatever. And then as part of that zoning, that kind of, remembering that up is because that really goes into your tiny houses. Because, I, I'll just hand you up, I do have an ordinance here from, I'm just trying to see, yeah, Clinton. They passed, it is fairly new deal, but in 2015, Clinton passed a small, a small house ordinance. And you can see what, basically they, within their zoning structure, they've created a separate district, there's a separate zoning. And then, you know, of course, they would have to apply to get a piece of property zoned properly, just kind of like our manufactured home situation. Someone would put in a manufactured home park somewhere, they have to come and get approval from this board. That kind of passes it on to the, now.
Is this a tiny house ordinance or a small home? Cause I think tiny houses as RV.
Well, you can see.
Are move portable.
Well, yeah, I mean, your, your portable, I think, all fall under your manufactured home.
Well, somehow, the portable buildings that were, were set in town, somehow slipped through the cracks, I think, when it comes to if the manufactured home ordinance covers those, something similar to a utility building, then they probably never should have been set in the beginning.
Yeah, I mean, the problem with that having building codes is that you can't regulate any kind of structures that go on, on the property. So, yeah, they can get, you can get around it by just saying, well, this isn't for a dwelling place. So, I mean, that's, that's always a problem, I'll be honest with every city that you get into. I mean, is this, is this for living or property, and it's gonna be treated differently. But with building codes, you're gonna have specific parameters that you have to meet for these other structures. And you can't just convert it over, you know, after you have a, you know, structure on the property, you can't just say, well, I wanna make that a residential now. And you can't just convert it over, you know, after you have a, you know, structure on the property, you can't just say, well, I wanna make that a residential now. We can't do that under the building codes and anything else. And you wouldn't be able to do it under that change of that definition that I made as well. And I mean, I'll be honest, the, the change of the definition of manufactured homes that, that I did was, for lack of a better term, it's a quick fix to, to the problem. I mean, it really categorizes anything that's either built for, either built onsite or offsite, whether it's on permanent foundation or non-permanent foundation. If it's under, then it's a seven hundred and fifty square foot, you can't put it on a piece of property unless you get approval. And, and that just basically throws it in the same category as the manufactured.
Or did you get that seven hundred and fifty square foot from, was that out of the?
In the federal law, it has a four hundred to a thousand for many houses?
Well, you, you can even look on that Clinton one, and I think it says nine hundred, anything from, what, hundred to seven?
A stru- structure not less than one hundred and twenty-eight square feet and not to exceed nine hundred square feet and not exceeding two stories in height.
Right, so.
Intended for the uses permanent, single-family residence.